We will have a pledge of allegiance to begin the meeting. Troop 916 from the Heritage Fifth Ward.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Troop 916. We have a, if the council will come down now, we have a presentation on recognition of outgoing council members Judy Hansen, Ben Southworth, and Justin Stoker for service on the city council.
Um, we had, as you all are aware, we had our election in November, and we have three council members who will be leaving us at the end of the year sadly. I sometimes feel like I've become their mother after several years, especially Ben. I've watched him grow up. And I'll first start with, we usually, we always give them their pictures, and we will be giving them their pictures that they can hang above their bed or whatever they'd like to do with them. But since we have one more meeting next week, we had to leave them on the wall until then, so we'll get them those. So I just want to read you some of the meetings and the things that they participated on and their terms of office since they've been council members. Sorry, I gotta put these on. Ben Southworth was elected in November of 2007, and he took office in, correct? He took office January 1st of 2008. So he has served two terms. This is his second term. He, these are some of the committees that he participated in. The Western Stampede Committee, Sustainability Committee, Salt Lake County Council of Governments, Public Works Committee, Arts Committee. He was a Utah, not Utah, UTA Board of Trustees member, Taxing Entity Committee. He was a volunteer summer barbecue subcommittee. And he was also mayor pro tem for the year 20, 2010. Any others that I missed? No, you could, sure. I do know, one of the things, I was talking to Julie and some of the others, that he was very instrumental in getting the Enduro Cross that we've had the last few years in the rodeo arena that he was able to bring here. Judy Hansen was elected in, I have to think, 2011, November of 2011. And so she's served from January 1st of 2012 until December 31st of this year, 2015. Some of the committees that she's served on is the Sustainability Committee, the Taxing Entity Committee, the Employee Discharge Appeal Board, the Salt Lake County Association of Municipal Governments, the Salt Lake Council of Governments, which is called COG. If you've come to council meetings, you hear it called that. The Fleet Management Committee, and if I recall, that was a difficult one because we had to learn the new way to purchase vehicles. The compensation for council members that we recently did, an ad hoc committee, the Budget Committee, the Youth Committee, the Taxing Entity Committee, which I just read, and the Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs, Economic Development Council. And then she is currently our mayor pro tem for this year. Councilmember Justin Stoker was elected during the same election as councilmember Hansen in November of 2011, and she served from January 1st of 2012 until the end of, she, he, sorry. But he served until March, April, March of this year. Since that time, he has been lucky enough to be an employee of the city, and now we can give him really that time. He's our Deputy Public Works Director. Now I know why you guys have a hard time with this. Here are some of the committees that he has served on. Arts Council, Historic Preservation, Parks and Open Line Committee, Sustainability Committee, Jordan River Restoration Project, and I think he really enjoyed that one a lot. The Branding Logo Committee, so he's part of the reason why we have a new logo here at the city. Salt Lake County Council of Governments, which is also COG, and the Jordan River Council. And he was mayor pro tem last year, in the year 2014. Do you guys want to share something? I think you should. Let me give you these first. They will have him give a little speech after. So in the years past, we've always given the council, so you guys will get better. We decided to do something different this year. As you're all aware, one of our longtime employees, Arlene Farley, retired yesterday, which is really weird for me. And so we have a new executive assistant that we gave this task to, and I says, you know, I don't think I'd really want a picture of myself and a plaque on my wall at home. So we decided, she decided to come up with, for all your time that you've served on the city council, we've had some clocks made that I actually really think are pretty. They have the new city logo, and it says, "Presented to Judy Hansen in their names in appreciation of your service and dedication to the city of West Jordan. City Councilmember, January 12th, 2012 to December 2015." Justin's will say the same, except for it will say January 2012 to March of 2015, and Ben's will say January 2008 to December of 2015. I just want to tell them how much I appreciated working with them, and we've had a fun rollercoaster ride and ups and downs, but you know what? Through the end, I've made some really good lifelong friends, so. And we're going to turn it over now to Chief, both Chiefs, Chief McElrath and Chief Diamond.
Thank you, Melanie. Doug says he has a sinus infection, so he wanted me to do the talking. We, in the past, both Public Safety, Police and Fire have given outgoing council members, mayors, a badge. This year, we've done something a little different. In years past, it's been a single. They each department would do their own. And I always said that, you know, if you wear the fire badge or fire stuff, people wave at you with five fingers, and if you have a police badge, sometimes you don't get all five of those fingers. You don't want to talk, so. Anyway, but there's some meaning actually behind doing these together like this. Both Justin, Judy, and Ben, and others on the council were part of, as you know, in April, we opened a new fire station out west, Station 54. It also has a police substation in it. And we actually started that project probably when Ben was, because he'd done two terms. And we didn't get it funded, the first time we brought it up, and it was for good reason, although, you know, you don't like to not get things funded, but the economy wasn't right, and it wasn't the right time. And we waited, and we got it done correctly, and it's pretty awesome to have fire and police both working in the same building. We get along, they come and eat our food, we give them stuff, they give us a bad time. But I can hear, I'm here to tell you that through your support and everything you've done for the Police and Fire Department, you have a station out there that is staffed by both fire and police, and we work well together. And I want to say thank you for your support over the years to all three of you. And we have a plaque here with each one of you, your name, and the dates that you served.
I'll just be really quick. I've really loved being a part of the city of West Jordan. I've made some wonderful friends along the way, and I've really loved giving my time and hopefully I've made a little bit of a difference along the way to, to help add little things here and there that have made West Jordan just a better place to live. And so I want to thank, say thanks to all of those that I've worked with along the way, all of the friendships that I've made, and all of the lessons I've learned, and hopefully will continue to be engaged in hope to make West Jordan the best place we can all live in. Thank you.
I'm gonna do my very best. Nope, I'm not, never mind. I was gonna say I'm gonna do my very best to not let my emotions take over what I, what I feel. That's a lot of joy. It's been eight years of a great experience. I consider myself very privileged, very honored to be able to be a part of, you know, we live in the greatest country in the history of the world. And, and the honor it is to uphold and defend and protect the Constitution of the United States, to be part of this republic, a representative republic. And I was thinking about that today, and, and about how, you know, I, just a, just a small piece of, you know, one council in this one city, when, and every few years there's, the council changes, and there's different people always, and we're one city out of many in a county, and many in a state, and there's state legislators, and, and it goes up to the federal, and you've got the judiciary, and all the people, and then you talk about all the staff, and everything's involved in, in government, and, and I was thinking, you know, wow, what's, what's that like? I'm just a, just a teeny tiny piece, just a small speck, insignificant. But it's an honor, and I feel blessed to be part of the greatest nation on this earth. And, and to be part of that. Just really quickly, there's a couple things along the way, you get little trophies, some of them you might call battle scars, and things like that, and I have a few things in here, just really quickly, I wanted to, to, to show you this baseball. It's cool. I, I got this, I threw out a first pitch, one of the leagues in the city. And, and as cool as that is to be part of that, it, and I love, my kids went through this league, I'm talking about out at Walling Woods. And, and it was a neat thing to, to be there with those kids and what have you, but it, but it doesn't represent that to me. In, in city service, I've learned that there's a lot of entitlement that takes place. And, and I watched as I got in and started working with this league many years ago, and we, and we worked with them, and, and there was no entitlement mentality out there in that league. And they always did things to improve what they had, and they worked hard at that. They donated tens of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment, and all you look at, all the scoreboards are out there, the way those things are kept. And, and to me, this, this is, this is a symbol of if you want something, you work for it, and you don't feel like you're entitled. And when you do that, you'll be successful. I've got a few in here, and I don't want to show them all. This one here is controversial, but it's important to me. I don't know if anybody knows what that is. That's a brick. This is a brick that has a lot of history, the city of West Jordan. This is a brick from the Sugar Factory. And that, to me, represents the industry, represents a lot of hard work, but it also represents, if you know the history of what happened here in the city with the Sugar Factory and that came down, when you're on a council, you have to make tough choices. And it doesn't matter what you do, and to the incoming council members, you'll learn this, and these folks here know this, every decision you make, there will be people who say, "You're wrong," or someone will say, "You're right." So you'll be loved and you'll hate it at the same time. It's hard to get decisions that everybody loves, and that's just part of our system. And it's a reminder to me of that, of what it's all about, but it's worth it. It's absolutely worth it. And there's one more I want to show you. This one's very important to me. This says, "West Jordan Community Built Playground." And it says, "I am community spirit" on the backside. I was very fortunate and lucky enough to lead over 600 volunteers in building a couple of community-built playgrounds, and to witness and watch the love of community that's within our city. I've seen that only a few times in this city, when people really, really come together. I've seen it on things like this where, they're fun things. I've seen it when there's been tragedy in our community. I've seen it when we've rallied against things we didn't want in our community, like we were gonna get a prison at one point. And it's just a reminder of, of the commitment and love of community that's out there. To me, that's what this means. There's a few more in here, I don't want to bore you with any more, but I just wanted to say this is kind of an honor and a privilege. I thank every one of you for the opportunity, and encourage anybody who ever has any desire to do it. It's worth it. It's worth to be part of that. And hats off to the rest of you who will continue to carry the torch. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been such a privilege and an honor for me. I have spent my, most of my career in government, but I have learned so much more in the last four years as to how our city works, how it is run. You have the greatest staff I have ever seen. I applaud them every day. They have your best concerns at heart. You have a great city council. And there's times when you walk away and you're angry at a choice that's been made, but you don't realize that choice also affects the council members, because if it's a fee or a tax or whatever, we also have to pay it. But I have made great friends here, friends I hope to keep. And I'm fortunate, I was chosen to be on the Planning Commission, so they're not getting rid of me, I'm still gonna hang around. But this is a, a great place, and I, I would encourage you, as, as Councilman Southworth did, if you have interest, step up, because it is a learning experience, and it is a great experience. As mayor pro tem this last year, I have had such marvelous opportunities given to me by that position, to meet a lot of excellent people, important people. I, I got to hand out the ball for the game, the Homecoming game at Copper Hills. That may seem like a small thing, but I enjoyed it. I loved that, handing that off to the track team, and they ran from here to Copper Hills for their first game at Homecoming. So these are some of the, the honors that I have had. Like I say, I'll be sticking around, but I think of all of the council members as my friends. I hope we will remain friends, and I think we've got a great constituency here, people who are very interested in this city and want it to become even a better city than it is now. And I thank you all.
We have one more presentation tonight. Serby Championship Rodeo, the stock contractor, for the past three years, we've been lucky enough to have Serby Championship Rodeo as our stock contractor, which takes fourth on, takes place on the 4th of July summer. Serby produces 10 of the top 50 rodeos in the country. We're excited to have them back this summer for our 62nd Western Stampede. Serby just returned from the National Finals Rodeo in Las Vegas, which is sometimes called the Super Bowl of rodeo. In the past seven years, 90 Serby Championship rodeo animals have been selected for the NFR. Serby sent us this set of spurs from the NFR, and we're gonna display them here at City Hall to remind us of our great rodeo tradition that began back in 1954. And they'll be just on display here, starting tomorrow, and it's for the 2015 National Finals Rodeo. They're engraved, it was, they were made by Montana Silversmiths, quite a unique set of spurs, so I just wanted to make sure everybody got to see. Pass them on down. Do we have a senator, or are you gonna wait till you're? Do we have a senator selected? Communications, city manager. City attorney?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
David Oka.
Yes, we're gearing up for the, the 2016 International Council Shopping Centers Convention. I will be contacting the city council, starting next month, to see if anyone's interested in going down to Las Vegas with us this year. Thank you.
Ryan Clay.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ryan.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Dave Murphy.
Just two quick items, nightmare. The 3,300 West Utility job is completed, and it was placed into warranty just prior to Thanksgiving. Final paving was completed on that project at that time. They have been working on some short punch list items, and the subdivision has been put back together again, essentially. Second item is the State Environmental Study for Bangator Highway is underway and has been kicked off by UDOT Region 2. The engineering firm that's in control of that study is Corox Engineers, and it is looking at five different intersections along Bangator Highway, 54th South, 62 South, 70th South, 90th South, and 114th South, affecting four different cities and the entire west side, looking at bridges on Bangator at those five intersections. This is the environmental clearance document that is necessary for them to be able to spend the money to go ahead and build the bridges and clear the right of way for the project. They are following very closely a NEPA process, but it is not a federal NEPA process. It comes close to that, but this is all going to be state-funded expenditures. The current budget right now is $90 million. That will fund the complete environmental study and pay for one to one and a half bridges, and they're looking for $220 million total funding for the rest of the construction budget. There will be a lot of public information coming forward on this in the next three to four months, with public hearings happening in April. So that's the schedule for the project right now.
Chief McElrath.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have one item to make you aware of. On December 21st, Monday at noon, Jordan Valley Hospital gives out a quarterly Amazing Save Award, and for the fourth quarter, they're gonna recognize firefighters at Station 52 along with a police officer that were involved in a medical incident that saved a 62-year-old woman's life. So they'll have a lunching and reunite the responders with the patient and give them some plaques and whatnot. So if they would like to attend, let me know, they just need a head count for, for lunch. That's all I have.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Chief Diamond.
I just want to let the council know that we had, or we received a letter today, just this afternoon, granting a, a grant to us of $11,500 from state monies to purchase either body cameras or in-car cameras. And so we'll be making that, but we're still going out, trying to get as many grants as we can to help support us. So thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Rice.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can tell, I walked in late. I'm, I'm a county delegate in Senate District 10, and tonight they're doing a special election to replace Aaron Osmond. So I'm pulling double duty tonight, and I needed to get credentials, and I'll have to leave soon here. So I would actually like to make a motion that we suspend the rolls and move Item 9B to the first agenda item after citizen comments, so that we can all be here for that incredibly important vote.
Second. I have a motion that Councilmember Rice, and a second by Councilmember Southworth. Discussion and motion? CNN, let's vote.
9B is the time side, apparently don't have the agenda open yet.
That's the.
The Parkgate.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Higgett?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote pass the second paper.
Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, I probably said enough tonight. I, I forgot to mention in eight years, if you look at that picture, somewhere along the way, I lost my hair. So, anybody seen it, you know? I don't know, I just, it's too serious earlier, so we gotta make a joke here, but, but again, thank you to everyone.
Councilmember Nichols.
I've got nothing to follow that. Thank you.
Councilmember Higgett.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I have, I have to, just a personal experience of the last two days. You know, I woke up Tuesday morning to go to, to an appointment into Taylorsville, and I woke up, I drove out of my park, my driveway, and our street was perfectly clean. And my, you know, and I go, you know, I knew we had funded our staff, I knew we'd given them equipment, but I wanted, I drove over, over the border to Taylorsville and to the neighborhood where I was doing my appointments, and their neighborhood had three inches of ice. And I give my hats off to our staff, and that shows your concern for our public safety and our roads, and that's a personal example of how clean our streets got on Tuesday. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
I'm nothing, I think I've said enough tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, excuse me. Special welcome to the students and Ms. Elaine Grant's AP World History and US Government class who are visiting with us tonight. You picked a really, really good night to come out to see some of what service in the city is all about. The city is really interesting, because this is really the place where the government has the most impact on your day-to-day life, but it's also the part that, from, at least from what I've seen, seems to be the most neglected. Most people don't know who their council members are. Only a handful of folks regularly come up to council meetings to make their, their voices heard. It's a privilege to have you here, and I hope you'll come away with a feeling of appreciation for not just what happened with the city council, but what the staff of this city do, and hopefully you'll see our appreciation for the residents who step up and come out of their way to make their voices heard. I would encourage you to make it a habit to come out regularly, to share your thoughts and opinions with us, so that we can accurately represent what the residents want, so please don't hesitate to get involved in tonight's meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just had one issue, and the bad thing about going last is somebody steals your thunder. I did want to state that we, this council put in place the ability to clean the streets, and there was a marked line between us and our surrounding cities as you entered our city or left our city. And it doesn't matter what you do to fund things, it really matters to those that got it done, and they did a wonderful job. And that's all I had. I have two signed up for citizen comments tonight. Paul Evans asked not to speak, but he wanted me to read his comment. "I walk the trails in West Jordan daily and use the parks in the summer. They bring joy and happiness to me and my family. They are also used by many citizens." Steve Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. Steve Jones, I live in.
Steve Jones, I live at 3234 West, 6920 South. First off, I'd like to express my gratitude to my council members that I interact with. I appreciate them. While, all things being, we may not necessarily always agree on everything, I think we have a bunch of good council members, and I appreciate that interaction. Tonight, I would like to address the business item 9B. It has to do with the parks and recreation. I had some good conversations today with council members, and I, I still think I come to the conclusion that when we're talking about some of these issues, there needs to be accountability. And one of the means that, in my simple mind, that I see that accountability is when, when a budget is, has a set amount of dollars going into it, and it has a revenue source that is that dollars. And so I understand, even with some members in the audience, we did some talking, and there is some, you know, some downsides with, with having a utility tax, because it does affect people's lives. But right now, after seeing some of the stuff that we've gone through with Proposition One, it's really kind of turned into be a real pet peeve with me, in that if we're going to fund some of these things, they need to be funded by more than just transportation. And so tonight, I am, I am looking at this, saying that we need to have this added to our utility, and, and we need to fund the parks, so that the director of the parks knows what his budget will be, and, and if it, and if he needs to exceed that, then he needs to come back to you guys and, and give a justification why it is. I, as a constituent, can look at you as representing me, and I can be here every week to address things that come up on the agenda. So I feel like I have a representation, and I also feel that it's probably a fair way to make sure that those things get paid for. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of signed up to speak. Anyone wishing to speak, now would be your time. Please come forward.
Jalen Thomas, 1348 West Barton Hollow Drive. And Steve and I were talking about this parks thing. I've been thinking about this for the last couple of days, and, you know, 231 is not a lot to you and I, or four, or I mean, 391 is not a lot. But I guess with, starting November 1st till December 24th, you know, we always think, oh, it's the season of giving. And I thought, well, I wonder what that looks like to people, you know? Each month, you know, how that's going to affect their livelihoods. There's no doubt we need to beautify this city. Well, I mean, I think it's still a pretty city, but there's always room for improvement. And so I was wandering through the grocery store, and I thought, what does that look like? And in this bag is option three. That's one year's worth of groceries. It's baby wipes, it's baby Motrin, it's cold medicine, it's, you know, your little baby food stuff. And I thought, well, yeah, that wouldn't make or break any of us, but it could somebody else. And I don't know if there's another avenue or a better way that this can still be accomplished without potentially hurting somebody on a fixed income. I don't know. You guys are the ones who know the budget. I know. All I know is that when you're dealing with people in crisis, you know, we've had an officer go out and buy a hot plate and food for a woman and her children. So do you think maybe that 231 is going to hurt them? That 391? Probably. And probably the percentage is pretty small, but I was just hoping, maybe we can look at a better way, maybe a better avenue where this wouldn't hurt anyone. You know, everybody's up in arms about the T-word. We don't want taxes. But if this goes under a tax, those people that are under a fixed income, there's already steps in place with the county that they can get a break on their property taxes. Nobody likes the T-word. I hate it. Fees is a tax regardless. You can't tell me it's not a tax. So anyway, that's, I guess that's what we get for the season of giving. But anyway, since I don't need these items, and, you know, other people do, you know, I want to give them to our victim advocate program, because I've never gone without, ever. I don't ever want to experience that, but this is my yearly monthly habit.
Anyone else, please?
I just want to thank all of you, and all of you, for the great city that we have, and for the good things that have been happening here, but I want strongly, I want to strongly support the full fee of $391 for perpetual operation and maintenance of our parks and open spaces. I use the parks with my 28 grandkids. All have their, their favorite times with grandpas at the parks. And then we go for ice cream, which is maybe even more favorite. But I think it's time for us to, to make an investment in staff and equipment that's needed to make West Jordan become a great city, known for the beauty and functionality of our recreation and streetscape amenities. Parks, trails, and streetscapes are an important element of our city's infrastructure. They are part of what brands our city as one where our political leaders have the vision and the courage to make a commitment to making West Jordan a destination for employers and just plain people who want to live in an upscale community. We have a lot of growing to do. Let's make it the best it can be. Our parks, streetscapes, trails, and other areas are a large part of who we are as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now would be the time, please.
Dirk Burton, 4492, Black Elk Way, West Jordan, Utah. First, I want to also thank those outgoing city councils for the service they've done and the work that they've done. It's been a pleasure working with you, and in particular, one, Judy, thank you for the work that you've done. I appreciate you representing me, and I look forward to getting able to represent you real soon. I also want to speak on the parks. I love our parks. I think it's great. I think it's important we take care of our parks, our streetscapes, our trails. It's an important part of West Jordan, and we need to keep that important part, get it taken care of. We need to provide proper and adequate funding for them. However, pulling a couple of dollars off the water bill is not the right place to pull the money to fund our parks. It's an unfair way to pay it. It's a fee we're putting on a water bill that's not related to parks. It's bad enough, we already have our streetlights on there, on the water bill. If someone has a large water bill, and we add the $2, what are on there, that's a real small percentage. But if the people have a small water bill, which are probably someone that has a smaller home and less money, then that's a larger percentage on that bill. So we're not billing them percentage-wise evenly across the board, so it's an unfair way to charge for this. We should pull it off to something that's a more fair, balanced way to do it, and we should pull the money from another source to do it, and we do need to take care of our parks, and we do need to provide for them. Pulling it from the water is the wrong place to get that. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I guess we don't need to state our name and address anymore.
Yes, you do.
Oh. Well, nobody else, I guess. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to say that I agree with everybody else that spoke on that we need beautiful parks, and we need to enhance the look of West Jordan. I'll be the first to agree with that. I do, though, disagree on the form of funding it. The fee is a tax, taxation without representation in so many ways. It keeps going up. You never have to come back to the citizen rate to ask for more. Now, if we can't trust our city, elected city officials, to take care of a need to beautify our city for economic development purposes, so that others can come through and say, oh, I'm in West Jordan now, then that's a shame. I think Brian needs more money. I think the Parks Department needs more money. But I feel like we have the money in place, in our general budget. That's where it's been forever and for many years, along with police and fire. And I'm just wondering when we're going to start doing a fee based for police and fire. And government is, that's, that's the things that government was created for. Municipal governments, police, fire, protection, roads, utilities, parks, and amenities that we can live and be, feel proud to live in a community on. So please don't do it by fee, but give them the money that's needed to make, beautify our parks and make our landscapes, not just parks. I understand it's not just parks, but the landscapes of West Jordan. And give them the manpower and the tools and equipment that they need to do it right. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Seenan, I will close the citizen's comments and move now to Item 9B on the agenda. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 15-217 authorizing the implementation of the proposed utility fee, sustainable, sustainable funding for parks and recreation fee for perpetual maintenance of parks, trails, open space, and recreation amenities. Ryan Clay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. As you are aware, this topic's been spoken about, talked about in great detail over the past few years. So the presentation tonight would be a review to a lot of you guys, because it hasn't changed too much. Tonight, we have a great opportunity, I feel, with the chance to improve the maintenance level and service to the parks, open space, recreation amenities, and the trails. The parks and recreation fee would supplement the current level of funding already devoted to parks and provide much-needed funding to adequately care for these community assets. As you all know, West Jordan maintains more parks and trails, open space, and recreation amenities than most, almost any other community along the Wasatch Front, and we need to maintain those assets so they're usable and safe for people, and they want to come. So I'll go through the short presentation. If you guys have questions, please feel free to ask. As we all know, parks contribute to the quality of our life in West Jordan. It affects property values, it affects economic development, the safety of our citizens, and recreational relaxation for our citizens also. If you don't have nice open lands, nice parks, you're going to invite an element in that we don't particularly want here in the city. Parks Department does more than just mowing. Here's just a quick list of the current areas we take care of. This doesn't include the admin properties. We are now frontline snow removal with the street department. So when they're out, we're out backing them up, doing the suds. Fortunately, with the growth we're experiencing, especially on the west side of town, the numbers are continually growing, and we'll see those continually growing until buildout. This is just a comparison that we went through and did an analysis with different cities and compared us with other cities as acres per full-time employee. And you can tell, we're pretty high up on the acre side compared to full-time employees. We're 25 acres per employee. Clinton's got us beat there a little bit. Again, this, these acres don't include admin properties or the trails or park strips. This is just solely park property. Right now, we maintain about 348 acres of just park property. In 2015, this was goal number three, parks, trails, and open space to develop and maintain a visually appealing community that builds property values and increases the quality of life and pride in our community. The previous year to this, it was goal number one. So I'm hopeful tonight that we can approve and get some, some sustainable funding put in place, so we can continue to take care of these assets. Why do we need a parks and recreation fee? To obtain proper staffing levels. Right now, we're roughly at about 2,005 staffing levels, and you'll see in a later slide, some of the positions we're asking for were positions that were lost during the layoffs in 2010. If we had the proper staffing, our level of service will increase. We have, we have amazing department and crew that takes pride in this stuff. Just some figures to throw out there, the last, from January 2015 to current, park staff has worked 2,000 hours of overtime, trying to maintain and keep things looking decent, the best shape we can. Again, it will maintain our current infrastructure along with future expansion, provide funding, sustainable funding source for parks, trails, open space, and recreation amenities, increase level of maintenance, and focus on the inward and outward appearance of our city, streetscapes, and then the inward appearance of the parks and landscape that we currently maintain. This is a comparison with the same cities, parks, employees per 10,000 residents. And as you can see, we're about 1.27 employees per 2,000 residents. We're, we're the lowest. Average is about 2.6. So that's just a quick comparison of where we're at employee-wise, per capita, per 10,000 residents, I mean. Parks annual budget, per capita, we're, right now, we're at 2707. Low, the lowest is Clinton City, which is 2627, but I think, I can't remember what their acreage was. I'm pretty sure it was less than ours. I don't have those numbers with me. Average is $36.53, based off of the cities in comparison here. Again, the park staff does what they can, and the best that they can with what they have with, with the budget we have right now, but I know it can be better. This is the additional staffing that we are asking for. Again, three of these positions we're asking for were layoffs in 2010 when the economy went bad. And then there's five other positions we're asking for to add to the park division, along with seasonal positions, 11 seasonal positions. We're also asking for an events crew, which would assist Julie Brown. This is taking the current volunteer events coordinator and part-time coordinator and turning that into a full-time position with three seasonal staff. That'll allow us, where we don't have to pull parks employees off to go manage and take care of all the many events that grow every year here in the city. And then you can see the total cost is about $595,000, and these are all burden, these all have the... And these are all burden, these all have the benefits attached to them. So these are the funding options we came up with. The two dollars and thirty cents would provide a weekly maintenance of parks, trails and open space, open lands, would be an overall higher level of maintenance from what you're seeing now, less stress on the overworked staff, the park staff that are putting in multiple hours of overtime trying to keep up with things. And then I would allow roughly about based off the numbers from utility billing, it'd allow about two hundred thousand dollars to be put into equipment replacement and minor infrastructure maintenance. The three dollar ninety-one fee per month would be, again, option number two, but ongoing infrastructure improvements, replacement, the staffing cost and then seven hundred and fifty-five thousand would be put towards equipment replacement, infrastructure maintenance. Fortunately, we were able to get the bond money. That's kind of gave us a kickstart to get some of this stuff, the older playgrounds taken down and replaced with old pavilions and different deficiencies that we're dealing with right now. We're trying to look forward and have a long-term effect so we have a sustainable funding in place and ready to go so we can keep this the amenities looking decent. Any questions? That's pretty much it.
Questions from council? Councilmember Hagan.
Brian, you know, unfortunately, I don't have internet, so I don't know why, so I can't see the slides. Will you go back to your staffing chart?
The what, the staffing chart?
Yeah. We're at five ninety-five, five mil, five hundred thousand ninety-five dollars.
Five hundred ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, five hundred ninety-five thousand.
Right there.
So this, these are the staff needs you need to get our parks up to par manpower-wise, correct?
Yes. And it's and it's more than just the perception sometimes is out with people. It's it's more than just mowing. It's this will get us to a point where we could actually manage the parks, have a turf management plan. Have we have a pretty good weed abatement plan and that could be improved on. Right now, we're we're just getting by with what we have. We don't have time to do, we don't have the staff to do the management plan, even if we have, and take care of the turf like it needs to. Once you have a management plan for for turf, once you get on top of it, it's going to manage itself pretty much. You just got to stay on top of it, but we really don't have the staff. So, yeah.
Thanks. Well, the other question now, maybe this is with to the city manager, but so we're talking about one of my favorite people, which is Julie, our event person. She's the hardest worker I think we have when it comes to events. So we're talking about part-time staff of three and with those with that staff being under Brian, so it would be our recreation kind of staff.
That's correct. It's a it's a parks and recreation fee. And we'll be looking at establishing more of a recreation department that that's solidified and has a dedicated fee towards it. A lot of times, the general fund is a catch-all for any project you want to have, but by having a fee dedicated to parks, it really can't go anywhere else if you don't have a parks department, you end that fee.
And and it would be followed by your your managerial. I mean, I so Julie came to us last year and we I think we understood that that she needed help, but we don't want to lose her of any people, but so ninety-three thousand dollars would take care of our events currently up for twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen.
Yeah, staffing. Once if the fee was implemented, we prioritize because it's going to take two years. Either option, if either option was approved, it'd take two years to implement just because of the amount of money for equipment and the staffing. We have to, we have to rotate it on a two-year basis.
Can I ask Ryan one question?
Sure.
So Ryan, when it comes to parks capital and the impact fees that we collect from builders, can some of that money be used for equipment?
As long as it was, like I said, equipment is tougher because, you know, you use impact fees for growth and equipment is is always tough when you get into growth. Usually it's, you know, for some kind of big project like the Ronwood Park was, we used most of our impact fees on that. So it's usually something that's has caused growth within our thing more than equipment. Equipment's a little tougher. It's a possibility, but it's a little tougher to to deal with.
But could the council, you know, as a could we decide to allocate some money for is the capital fund, because we have actually a parks capital fund?
Yes.
Can we allocate some of that money to some of our equipment?
Yeah, you you could, you could allocate the if if this fee went through, you could allocate some of that money directly to parks capital for larger equipment.
Thanks, Mayor.
Other question? Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just Brian, I'd like a clarifying question with respect to the staffing that you're presenting it just for full understanding and comprehension. The idea, the way I see it, is in staffing in these areas, it 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 would provide sufficient that we can cover parks, open space and landscapes and like the urban forestry program. It would adequately cover it so all areas are approved. Not I just want to confirm it's not just parks.
Yeah, it's it's right now, as you guys know, we only have one urban forester to cover roughly thirteen thousand plus trees. We have no crew. We have a bucket truck that was we were able to tank as a from the street department because they purchased new ones. So we've got a bucket truck and one urban forester to maintain all these trees. And that's why you see a lot of the missing trees in the streetscapes too. That's one of the reasons. The other is deficient irrigation systems that we're currently working on. Yes.
Thank you. Other questions? I think you're done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Turn back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief statement. Try to keep it under a minute or less, but philosophically, I've had a change in my six years on the council and that was, six years ago, I firmly believed that we could work so hard on economic development that we'd enhance and create a natural tax base that we could support parks so that we can make our parks pretty. And it sounds great in theory and I know we've worked hard to that end. Unfortunately, we came on the back end of a recession and and now that we're in this economic period where things are going well, we're seeing that those results are not coming to fruition. We're seeing some economic development activity, but not to the level of what we would expect. And I came to the realization, at least on my point, that it's I have the formula backwards and it's very much in my mind like a business. And that if you want that return on investment, it's going to require the investment and that investment is an investment in your community and it's a financial investment. There's no question about it. And to the community at large, that's clearly worth a tax. Through the form of extra finances, we can have that betterment, which is the return on investment. The return on investment for me is not just for your neighborhoods, but it comes, it comes right down to the bottom line. You improved real estate values and then as larger businesses come in, they're going to be taxed at this much better rate that we've already improved upon. You're going to end up having a much more significant tax base by having it approved on the front end rather than the back. And it's taken me, it was about four or five years into the into the council before I really came to that reality. That's really the reality and that's how I view it. And I whether we approve this or not tonight, I I challenge the council that we need to find funding for parks and I just wanted to make that argument.
Councilmember Hagan.
My, yeah. So I just did a slide just so I can show you numbers because when you quote numbers and when you see numbers, it's two different things. So if I get that up, it's just a brief statement, but so, you know, we're going to actually be approving our our CAFR, which is called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. One thing we learned from that report is we have, this is kind of like your bank account what you have in your bank. We have eighty-four million, three hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-two, well, no, third three hundred and seventy thousand and then thirty-two dollars. That's what we have in cash. We're a hundred and twenty million dollar city, which means our budget, we accumulate that money every year. And so if you look at that, those numbers and you're a resident and you say, those are my dollars, they really are. Now, a lot of it are reserved, they're reserved for roads and a lot of the things that our staff has planned, but I wanted to bring up especially what the CAFR has reported on our cash fund balance. We have a reserve but balance in our general fund. And our general fund comes and funds our police department, our fire department and parks. And we have a fund balance, meaning we have in the bank cash, no restriction, eleven million dollars, five hundred and twenty-six thousand eight seventy-seven cash reserves. Now, that's my, I asked the mayor today, have you ever, when you're on council, seen that kind of reserve? Back in in those days, they had lower reserves. We were allowed up to twenty-five percent. And then I wanted to bring up the attention to staff, you know, in our capital improvements. Now, you know, two years ago, I'm one that believes in parks, you know that, and I believe in our staff and Brian, he's done a great job. In fact, you know, this year, we approved four million dollars bond to get our parks back to status quo. So here, I live on the east side and there there's some parks real, I can go down to the river and see some really bad parts that we need to repair. And that is our capital money we have in the bank. And then this year alone, we received two million, three hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-one in impact fees. Impact fees come from developers doing homes and we have a fee that they have to pay for impact on our parks because they're bringing people in. And of course, you know, when you're a resident, you don't see those things until you buy the you buy the home, it's added in the price of your home. So why why I bring this up? These are real numbers and, you know, we have the money in the bank, you know? What this fee is, right the night, if it happens, and I it might, it might not, there's four people that can, four of us, I should say, and we're a body and the majority rules that can say that we're going to increase shore water bill. And that's where the money's going to be sent to you every month. What I would say is instead, Brian, we need, we need to get this staff. We need these people. I'm I'm thinking you need six hundred and fifty thousand dollars really for twenty fifteen. But I what I would propose to the council and go on to discussion if you want, is that we take that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund balance and allocate that to parks in our general fund. Thanks, Mayor.
Other counsel? Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of what's been shared tonight, I don't have any disagreement with. In fact, I would support. The biggest thing that I'm struggling with is the mechanism to find the proper funding for the parks. Couple, couple things are running through my mind. First of all, man, there's so much stuff that we could do with the parks and I think the residents would like to see us do more. I was recently in Scottsdale, Arizona. They've got a fantastic park that's got a train thing. They've got these old train cars that are out there that have been made kid-friendly. You go to Little Rock, Arkansas, and their parks department actually has a submarine sitting on the river. Granted, we probably could do that in the Jordan River, but seeing the the attention that other cities give the parks is something that makes cities unique. It makes them memorable. I'd like to see us do something similar. My concern, though, is by doing this as a fee, it it I'd like to see flexibility and I'd also like to see accountability. Right now, having the parks funded out of the general fund, we have the flexibility that we need when it comes to budgeting. When the economy does go south, as we've seen in the past, it gives us the ability to take money from the niceties and put it towards the necessities. If we break parks apart completely, we don't have that flexibility in in the budgeting process anymore. It could be argued that some residents don't want to see that flexibility. They'd like to see parks funding protected and I don't disagree with that. However, if that's the approach that we want to take, I would prefer that we see it done differently. I would prefer to see it as another line on the property tax rather than broken out as a fee. As a fee, it's far too easy for a council to ratchet that number up, whereas with the with it being included in property tax, there's a little bit more safety there. The other thing is, right now, it's proposed that this would be in addition to the funding that's already coming out of the general fund. What we saw with Stormwater, Stormwater at one point was funded out of the general fund and then when it was broken apart separately, it wasn't funded at a rate that completely covered the expenses. And it wasn't long until we started saying, oh, well, we need to ratchet this up. I wonder how many years out or how many changes of council it would be until people would start to expect that that fee would completely fund parks instead of just augmenting what's already there. So I really hesitate to set us down a course that would take us that direction. If the approach we want to take is let's find money dedicated to parks that can't be routed to another group, I would prefer that we see it done in a different route than by adding a fee to the utility. I prefer to see it as a as a property tax, take what we've got now, move it down to parks, make it completely separate so that we do have that full visibility into it. That was one of the other comments that that I had a hard time with. Some folks had mentioned that breaking out of a parks fee would add transparency into how much was being spent on parks. I think that comment's only accurate if full funding is coming from that fee and not just partial offsetting within the general fund. So I think a different approach would better provide for transparency, flex or accountability and flexibility. So I I'm not supportive of the approach, though I would wholeheartedly agree with what's been said by councilmember Nichols previously and many others on this council that we need to find a way to make funding sustainable. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Southwood.
Thank you, Mayor. As I think about this, the first thing that that really comes to my mind is is a lot of times we focus on parks and say it's parks. And to me, that's like saying, like, I'm going to Disneyland because I want to see Mickey Mouse. That's it. Well, there's a whole lot more to it than just that. And we're talking about parks and and Brian Lang, he's out pretty well on trails, our open space, our urban forestry, weed abatement, the facilities deficiencies we have, the capital projects and things like irrigation and turf and building maintenance. Talking about our playgrounds, our sidewalks, our ADA access, we're talking about that type of stuff, pavilions, landscape, fences, snow removal, our administrative buildings, and let's just keep going on. And that's what we're talking about. Open space, we're talking about streetscapes, we're talking about the citizenry not getting, driving it off Redwood Road from South Jordan and going, oh, yeah, I know where I'm at now. Because you know it immediately, you can tell the difference. That's the type of things we're talking about. And 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 councilmember McConaughey brings up some really good points about and and I share your 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 thoughts there when you say, well, how do you fix this? Because I think we're all in agreement that we need to fix it, right? It's a problem and it has been. My entire tenure, hate to make this a thing here, but my tenure on the council, last eight years, has been this. It's been this struggle. The parks and open space has lost every single time. And that, what's the definition of insanity? Everybody knows the answer there. Doing the same thing over expecting a different result? I'm tired of that. Tired of being insane. And so I share some of your comments there. Well, is there a different way to do it? But I went back and I looked at the town hall meetings we had. I think this was maybe a year and a half ago or so and it was pretty significant and I thought they were. I was impressed. A lot of people came out. They were across the city. There was a lot of citizen engagement and some of the things that came out of there. First thing, there was a question that says, based on the information that was presented, right? Because there's a lot of information presented. The question was, do you feel you were given the information needed to make an informed decision regarding the future of parks, open space and trails? Eighty-five percent said yes. Do you have the information you need? Do you have the information you need? Eighty-five percent, that's a, a very large majority. Well, what did they find out? First of all, number two, seventy-four, four percent of them said they wanted a higher level of care for their parks. Seventy-four percent. That's a mandate. That's clearly a mandate in my mind for me. That's why we're here tonight, is that in my mind. Seventy-five percent agreed with, there were some questions there. Um, what level of care would you want for your parks, trails and open space? Seventy-five percent said, well, actually, I don't want to do that. What do you believe the parks for the city, um, is best for the city to own and maintain? Anyway, seventy-five percent said their answer was that they are important elements to our city, which improve property values and lifestyle and that the city should actively promote dedication of open space and I am willing to pay my fair share for this benefit. Seventy-five percent said they are willing to pay their fair share. So I'm going down this road and I'm saying, okay, A, the citizenry gets it, fix the problem. They have the information they need, they're telling, I'm willing to pay, pay my fair share. Now, back to the comments, I mean, councilmember McConaughey, I've heard this from other folks too, how do you do it? And I thought maybe the property tax is the way to go. Until you read the results again, the question was, do you prefer a utility park fee or a property tax? Which one is it? I'd say take a guess, but we're not wasting more time. Eighty-six percent said, put it on a utility fee. Fourteen said, raise my pro- uh, property taxes. I can't argue with that. I cannot argue with that. Eighty-six percent said utility fee, fourteen percent. And again, it reminds you, eighty-five percent of these folks said, I have all the information I need to make a decision. And so I, I think, and that changed my mind. Honestly, changed my mind because I, I, I like the, I like the property tax. The way it's set up, excuse me, that came out really, oh, I didn't know that. But I like the way it's set up because if you have, if you want to increase that, you've got to go, it is difficult. And by design, you've got to go through this whole process and it's really hard and I love that. I love that it's hard because it makes you think about it. And I thought, boy, if we're going to have this utility fee, should we have a property tax and make it really hard to, to, to never change that? But the citizenry says, no, we don't want that. Eighty-six percent says, give me that fee. Well, if you think about a fee, you still have to go through a public hearing. It's still difficult to increase if you ever wanted to. Anybody's ever been involved in some of the other increases we do, it's difficult. So it's not just a, on a whim, somebody can raise this or lower it or do whatever they want. It's still difficult. One more, we had a survey done in two thousand and ten. Remind you, this is, um, this is during the recession. You know, we're kind of peaked out of the recession, we might be coming out, maybe we're still in it, remember this time, everybody. We had a study on parks done in this city. And the survey came back and, and the question was, do you support a tax increase? Four, and it gave some items. And this was very, very interesting. Remember, you have to remember, this is during the recession. What's the mindset? People are losing their jobs, they're seeing neighbors laid off, the, the, everything's just a wreck and nobody's in the mood for this. A majority supported better maintenance. Would you, would you support a tax increase for better maintenance? A majority said yes. Would you support for new trails? Surprisingly, they said yes. Would you support a tax increase for new rec center, parks or open space? No, they would not. We're not asking for new parks, rec centers or open space with this. We're talking about maintenance. In the, in the height of the recession, the citizenry said, I will support that tax increase. I will support that fee increase to take care of my city. This is not about just parks. It's about open space, urban forestry, all those things we talked about, but it's about economic development. It's about our home, uh, our home values, it's about the way we feel about our city. The broken window effect. Why am I going to take care of my yard? Why am I going to clean up my park when the city looks the way it does when they don't take care of it? So to me, this is much more than just parks. Thank you.
I have a, oh, please.
I'm ready for a motion. Do you have a comment?
I, I have a comment first, then we'll go to you. In two thousand and twelve, the previous city council raised property taxes twenty-one point eight-two percent. Since that time, we've had four final budgets, which have had surplus fund balances larger than the state law allows. And our hard-earned tax dollars were diverted to other areas to meet the state law. Also in two thousand and twelve, and again in two thousand and thirteen, water, sewers, storm drain fees were raised between five and a hundred and three percent. All of the large, all of these funds have large surplus fund balances. I don't believe the increases were needed then and they, they are not needed now for this fee. We are, have over eighty million in the bank. We as a city council just need to direct the staff how to get this parks department funded. And I believe that a fee on the utility bill is the wrong thing to do at this point in time. Councilmember Rice. Do you have another?
I asked for a motion first.
No, uh, she actually had her button up first.
Yeah, you were going for a motion.
Yeah, she did, she said. She got, she got her. Councilmember Rice.
Thank you, I'm ready for a motion. I move to adopt resolution number fifteen-two-one-seven, authorizing the mayor to approve the implementation of, of the proposed parks and recreation fee of one dollar and ninety cents per month per residential unit for sustainable funding for the perpetual maintenance of parks, trails, open space and recreational amenities.
Second. We have a motion by councilmember Rice and a second by councilmember Southwood. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I'd like to make a substit- substitute motion. I, I really actually wanted to make this the main motion. But I would like to move to allocate six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund balance, which is eleven, five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars and eighty-seven-seven cents to Parks Department for new staff recommended by the city manager and the parks director.
Second. Discussion to the motion.
Clarification, councilmember, now is that in addition to what was presented here? And to take the park fee?
Oh, I'll, I'll, you want more clarification?
Well, just want to clarify, if, I didn't know if it was the only thing they do is take six hundred and fifty or if you're saying in addition to the parks fee, add shot me on to the parks department, the six hundred and fifty thousand? Or, or is this?
No, this is a separate motion.
Okay, okay.
Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Nichols.
Mayor, I'll speak against the motion for one fact. You, when you take money from a balance, it's one-time money, period. That's not a sustainable money source. That's not proper budgeting. If you have at home, if you make, uh, let's say we make ten thousand dollars a year and you have an outflow of nine thousand, you have a thousand dollars there that's left over going into the next year, there's a thousand dollars. It's just a one-time money, it's a thousand bucks left at the end of the year. Maybe next year, your expenses go up, which is what happens in a city. You need a sustainable source, you need to change the income, not the balance. And also additionally, it's been stated, I've heard here, up here about this fact that we have leftover monies. It's a fact in the city, everyone needs to know that every year, we have revenues and we have expenses. And right now, every year, our expenses that we budget on the budget, I'm not talking what's left over at the end of the year, I'm talking when we budget. Our expenses exceed revenue. And that's what we base our decisions on. We don't base it on the fact that, oh, I think I can save enough that we'll have enough left over. That's essentially what this argument is, that we think that there, we won't spend that money. But you got to know the facts. If you're saying that I'm going to make a million dollars this year, but I'm going to spend one point one million and that's my plan and just hope that that money is there leftovers by expanding in the next year, that's what this argument is. I'll speak against the motion.
Mayor, could I make a comment?
I'd love to respond to that.
Just right after, councilmember Hagan.
So we, at the words sustainability, that's really what we want, sustainability. And sustainability can come from a fee, no doubt. However, for the past four years, the mayor already disclosed, we have moved out of our fund balance, our general fund, into other areas. I raised my hand and I moved this money so that we could conform to the state requirements to stay below the twelve million dollars that we can go up to. We're, we are at twenty-four percent right now, fund balance reserves. And we have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And there's no doubt, if you go back to the, the fall, the last, uh, excuse me, last spring, the fall, and then the spring that I actually was my first vote, we have moved money from the general fund into other funds. So, and why did we do that? Because we were over the general fund balance requirement of the state. The taxpayers' money has been moved and shuttled around. Now, if, in my opinion, if I had eleven million dollars and I could, uh, make, do home improvements on my house for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I would do it. And, you know, for the next council, the challenge will be, can we make that sustainable? But let's don't do a fee. Let's give our parks department the, the personnel they need to make this city look beautiful. We do, there is no doubt. We may need to make this city beautiful. We have the money for capitals. Remember, capitals are all the playgrounds, you know, all infrastructure of a park that, that needs to be done. We have seven point three million dollars to fund that. So until you can spend that and tell me we're broke, don't raise our city, our citizens' taxes. A fee is a tax. There's no doubt, a fee is a tax. And this really, in my opinion, gives our staff what they need, the money they need. The question will be, will our next council be able to make it sustainable? Thanks, Mayor.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only been here three months, so I've not been through a complete budget cycle. But, um, I do know one thing you don't fund an ongoing program is one-time only, uh, a confusion of, of capital. We've already identified several major projects the city will be engaged in that will more than take care of any reserve funds that we have. So we won't have that, uh, gap with the state probably very, very quickly. If the council decides to give us six hundred thousand dollars, that means that in a year, I'll have to fire the people that I hired. So I'm telling you now that, um, even if I have this extra six hundred thousand, I won't be hiring any extra people, just for their sake.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, um, also in agreement with, uh, both, uh, our city manager and councilman Nichols. This is a one-time, um, money that you're talking about. Um, so we put this money you're talking about in this year. Next year, does he have to let people go because it was a one-time money? And he doesn't have it any longer? I would rather see, I don't know that a fee is the way to go. Um, but I just don't see moving money one time is going to help our parks. He can then buy his equipment, he can get his staff, but then a year from now, is he going to be able to keep that staff? Because that money will be gone. And once again, the next council is going to have to decide if they want to again, give him money out of the fund balance or create a fee. So I just don't think that would be the way to do it because it is a one-time money. Thank you.
Councilmember Southwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a question to, to Brian. Of the monies that we're asking, how much, um, is the equipment? What would the cost of equipment? Let's say that the FTEs that you're asking for, you have, what's the dollar amount for the equipment that we're looking at?
That would be based on, like I said earlier, it would have, if we phased in over a two-year period, right? So as we prioritize the staff that we need, first year, we got to also have the equipment online. So we have to, we have to split the monies between staff and equipment. Can't hire all the staff and all of the equipment to, uh, for them to operate. So we, we have a broken down as per crew. So if we go with the urban forestry cr- crew, for example, you know, we have the line item that this is how much equipment's going to be, this is how much, uh, staffing will be. So it's broken down as per crew.
So if you ballparked and you said, I, you know, magic wand, we wait, remember this is magic, so we don't have to deal with reality for a second. And you said, I've got all the, all the people I need, I've got the manpower, the labor force that I need. What's the dollar amount I'm going to need in equipment and just a ballpark?
Uh, about seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand for all, for all of, of the staffing we're asking for.
A significant amount just for that staffing. Okay, um, then I'll turn my comments back to the council and, um, suggest, actually have a substitute motion. And I move, um, I, I appreciate the previous motion and, and actually I, I like that. And I would move that we approve resolution fifteen dash two-seven, authorizing the implementation of the proposed utility fee sustaining funding for the parks and recreation fee for perpetual maintenance of parks, trails, open space and recreational amenities, setting that fee at one dollar and ninety cents. And in addition to directing city management to find a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash to immediately supplement that money to find the equipment, to equip the first year's worth of manpower.
One more, Mayor, I have a substitute motion on.
And Hagan's made a substitute motion to your substitute motion.
Okay.
So would you repeat your motion?
Clarification. Were you? Uh, yeah, absolutely. So clarification is that we implement the fee, the utility fee at one dollar and ninety cents. And in addition to that, do we authorize our city manager to find two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to equip these newly hired individuals with the equipment they're going to need to get going through the first year? Now, what that does is, so this clarification here, is the fee is to support the labor force. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our fund balance is to bring up the amount of equipment so that we're not underfunded. I want to see an immediate impact on the streets of West Jordan. Thank you.
They have a motion and, uh, by councilmember Southwood and councilmember Rice seconded that motion. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Hagan.
I'm going to take you back to, to parks capital. So we have seven point three million dollars in parks capital. We're, you're going to approve tonight, I don't think I'll be here because I have to do another thing, but we're going to approve the comprehensive report prepared by our, um, great staff. And that's what we have in parks capital improvements. We don't need more money, with all due respect, to buy equipment. In fact, Ryan just told us tonight that, yes, we can use our parks capital money to buy equipment. Now, the four million dollars, that goes to improve our parks to status quo. I want our trails perfect and Ryan's got a great plan to do that. But, you know, if we recollected two point three million dollars in impact fees, we, next year, and I got the word from Ivory Home that they're completely sold out on the east, the west side of our city. This city is going to grow and you're just going to see our impact fees grow in parks. And so as far as the extra money and the fee, I, again, I oppose this motion because we, we have taxpayers' money now. We don't need to ask more money from our taxpayer or our residents to pay when we have money sitting in the bank to do everything that we need to do for our parks. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson.
I'm sorry, I didn't turn off my mic.
Councilmember Rice.
Yes, thank you, I would like to call the question.
Second.
To get going through here soon.
Second.
Your question's been called, we have a second.
On what question?
On the question.
Call the question on the original then, motion. Which overrides the, the substitute?
I'm not sure on that, uh, if that carries.
So we have three motions on the table?
We do, we have three motions on the table. Um, I, my interpretation would be calling, the question would be to vote on the second substitute motion.
Correct.
And then go backwards from there.
Correct. Correct.
Right.
Okay, so we've called the question, we have a second. We're voting only on...
On calling the question.
Calling the question, not the motion.
Right, that's all we're voting on right now.
One last thing, just for public record, did you repeat the motion?
The calling the question?
The motion is on the table.
No, that's not on the table.
Well, that's on the table right now, we're calling the question.
We have a question that's going to be voted on, I'd just like to point a clarification for the public, what we're going to be voting on.
Okay. This is what happens. We are voting on the question being called, then we will vote on the motion.
Correct.
Now, we're only voting on whether or not the question is called, or we're going on to substitute motions.
Correct.
Not the motion itself.
Correct. Ready?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Vote passes five to two in favor.
Now, we have the motion repeated, so everyone knows what they're voting on.
Councilmember Southworth moved to approve Resolution fifteen dash two-seventeen to adopt, oh, sorry, authorizing the implementation of the proposed utility fee of one dollar and ninety cents per month, which is sustainable, yeah, sustainable funding for the Parks and Recreation Fee for Perpetual Maintenance of Parks, Trails, Open Space and Recreation Amenities, and in addition to fund two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash immediately for equipment for the new staffing.
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Was seconded by Councilmember Rice.
The question has been called, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Mayor Roth?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote fails three to four.
Call the question on the substitute motion number two, I suppose.
Well, it was the substitute, original substitute motion, right?
So, that would be just clarification, that would be Councilman Hagan's, just a quick comment?
I'll second it for discussion. So, I have a motion, the motion is on the table, to call the, let's see. Okay, this is just call the question, okay?
Uh-huh.
So, that's all.
Okay.
So, the motion is seconded.
This is just a call the question to take a vote on the first substitute. Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
No.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
Now, could you please repeat the motion, just so anyone knows, the first substitute motion?
Councilmember Hagan moved to allocate six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fund balance to the Parks Department for new staff as recommended by city manager and city staff. Is that correct? It was seconded by Mayor Roth.
The question's been called, let's vote.
So, clarification, that's six hundred and fifty thousand from?
Fund balance.
We're voting on six hundred and fifty thousand from the fund balance, not to create, this vote here, voting yes, will not create a park fee.
A fee, no.
This will only take six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the fund balance.
Correct.
Now, let's have court case.
It's in the debate, Mayor.
Okay, you wait till you follow. Councilmember Hagan.
If we're debating, still on the motion.
He was asking for clarification, so if you have, if you have a clarification to his question, now would be the time.
So, what we're voting on is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our general fund, and my recommendation, if you listened to it before I made the motion, is we have two new council members coming on in two weeks. Let's the new council body decide how we're going to make this sustainable. We have the money now, but I'm not, like, again, point of clarification, I do not want to be, I want to use the money the taxpayers already has in, have in our general fund.
That's all.
I'm going to ask a little clarification. So, was that part of your motion to allow the new council to create a sustainable, okay, so only the six hundred and fifty, so everyone's clear, okay. Counselor?
Do you have a point of clarification?
Okay, Councilmember Southworth?
No.
Okay. Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Vote fails two to five.
Now, we're back to the original motion.
So, now, the only motion we have on the table is the original motion.
We like to take longer sometimes.
I have a substitute motion to the original motion, and that is to take five hundred and ninety-five thousand from the general fund where the existing parks exist immediately and make it an ongoing cost.
Clarification, Mayor, I have really apologies, but was the question called? I don't know that.
No, it wasn't.
No, no, the first.
Just on the first, okay, sorry, proceed.
So, we're, okay, so, five hundred and ninety-five thousand from the general fund, make it an ongoing cost for the new budget going forward in two thousand sixteen or sixteen seventeen, and from the five million dollars that exists in the fleet fund currently, without impacting this park, parks capital fund, staff, or equip the employees that we need to manage the parks increase immediately.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Roth and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion to the motion, the substitute motion.
Again, I appreciate, Mayor, for making a little more clarification. You know, the words sustainability is important in the city government. It is in all our lives, you know, I pay as I go, but we need, we do need to make sure that if we give our parks director this money, that's sustainable. So, I did, the mayor identified another fund where we can buy the equipment, and so I support this motion. Thanks, Mayor.
I have a comment. Councilmember Southworth did state that we had meetings in two thousand fourteen. I was at three of four of those meetings in the parks, and I'm sure that his percentages are accurate, but in the three meetings I attended, I know there weren't over fifty people at any one of those meetings, and so it's a small representative of the hundred and ten thousand population that we have here, so I don't put a lot of merit in, in that. And we currently have excess to our needs, eighty-four million dollars plus, in the, that is hard-earned tax dollars, and I believe that the citizens deserve better parks, and I will support better parks, and I will support Brian to get us better parks. Also, I believe our landscapes on our roadways, our streetscapes will be addressed in this as well, and we don't need a fee. Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, man, I love going out to the bank. I love all the passion that's here. And we, I mean, no, really, this is great. We're really passionate about the city, and so this is, this is good stuff, and I like it, and I thank everybody. I want to make a comment, though, this, you know, I don't remember the numbers, but let's just say that was true, and there was maybe barely over fifty people that showed up. I would point to last election, and you, I think you'd struggle to count fifty citizens other than the family of the candidates that came to the debates. Man, you'd be lucky to even get half that number there. And so, when you say there's that fifty people, I'm going, wow, great job, that's a win. You know, that's people coming out. So, what came out of that was good for the city. And, and with that, I will call the question.
Second.
Got the question called by Councilmember Southworth and a second by Councilmember Rice. Let's vote.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
That's all.
Again, clarification, this is on Mayor Roth's substitution.
Do you want me to read what I think it was?
It's okay.
Okay. Mayor Roth moved to take five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from the general fund, from the existing park budget, for ongoing costs beginning in two thousand sixteen seventeen, and five million dollars from the fleet fund, and currently equip the employees, equip the employees needed to manage the park increase immediately.
I just need to clarify that not take five million dollars from the fleet fund, pull the equipment from the five million dollar fleet fund that is required for staffing of the new employees.
Got it.
It's a significant difference.
That's a significant difference, yes, it is. Okay. Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
No.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
The vote fails two to five.
Okay, we're back to the original motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
If necessary, I called the question for the original motion.
I need clarification on the motion, because it's been, it's kind of convoluted at this point.
What was your statement?
I called the, to avoid more substitutes and keep dragging this out for another hour, I called the question on the original motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Have a, question, called the question by Councilmember Southworth and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
The vote passes five to two in favor.
Now, would you like to read?
Yep.
The original motion now?
Yep, I just lost my spot here.
There's no comments, it's only the original motion read, and we vote.
Yeah, it's been a half hour since that motion's been made. Councilmember Rice moved to adopt Resolution fifteen dash two-seventeen, authorizing the implementation of the proposed utility fee of one dollar and ninety cents per month, as a sustainable funding for the Parks and Recreation Fee for Perpetual Maintenance of Parks, Trails, Open Space and Recreation Amenities. The motion was seconded by Councilmember Southworth. Ready?
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
Yes. I'm in, sorry, yes.
That's okay. Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes five to two in favor.
Five to two?
Yeah, five to.
Good man, before, Mayor.
Councilmember Hagan.
I would like to reconsider this vote, based on the fact that we have two council member elects that need to sound out on this tax fee, and would like it to be on the agenda January thirteenth, am I right? Thank you.
There should be consideration for January thirteenth.
Is it seconded?
I'll second.
I don't need a second.
He doesn't really need a second, he can have, he was on the...
Point of clarification?
Yes, Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that has to be brought back, is it two regularly scheduled council meetings? Because if that's the case, then we've got the one on December twenty-third, then we have another one on January fourth, which would put the thirteen outside. Okay.
The four is just the same.
It has to be brought back within two meetings, and he pushed it out to the second meeting.
By the record, right from the mayor's remark, but...
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick statement, this has to come back to us anyway, in the form of a fee that we have to pass, is that correct? I just bring that back to state. Usually, we bring the uniform fee schedule back. Actually, it's not the uniform fee, I'm sorry, do we have to bring that back, or is it done? I'm just asking that.
Okay, you're, shoot.
I'm sort of rolling the question.
The question is, does this have to be come back, do we actually have to approve the fee amount, or are we done? Because I've seen that done in the past, where we approve a fee increase, but it has to be brought back for yet another vote.
I believe that's come back for a public hearing, if it's approved, yes.
I'm not, I thought this created...
If you implement the fee, it will, I would believe, it has to come back as a public hearing at some point, but we're clearing to January now, before it's going to be brought back, so.
Thank you.
Did you need to leave, Councilmember Rice? Thank you. Would, would you mind calling me and let me know what happens? Thank you. Councilmember Southworth.
No, nothing, thank you.
Okay. Consent items, consent calendar. Discussion and/or a motion.
Motion.
Councilmember Nichols.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Councilmember Hanson, discussion. Let's vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
The vote passes five in favor.
Public hearing, item eight A, receive public input and consider for approval Resolution fifteen dash two-two-seven, authorizing the city's intent to make an unsecured loan to the redevelopment agency of West Gordon City in the amount of approximately four million five hundred thousand for acquisition of property located at ninety-two zero four south, fifty-six hundred west, for the purposes of facilitating development within the city. David Oka.
Yes, Jeremy Olson, who's to address this issue.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a follow-up from, an item from the redevelopment agency at, at our last meeting, where you voted to allow the agency to purchase property. This loans the money from the city to the agency to acquire that property. That amount is four point five million dollars. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions for General?
Looks like you're good, thanks, General.
Return to the council for, oh, excuse me. We will now open the public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on public hearing item eight A, now would be the time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, item eight A, and return to the council for comments and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. If there are no comments, I am ready with a motion.
Now would be in order.
I moved to approve Resolution fifteen dash two-two-seven, authorizing the loan of four point five million from the general fund to the redevelopment agency for acquisition of property located at ninety-two zero four south, fifty-six hundred west.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Mayor Roth. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Business side of nine A, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution fifteen dash two-two-eight, accepting the audit report and presentation of the consolidated annual financial report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is, of course, an annual tradition around this time, which we hope to speed up quite a bit over the next couple of years. We're already putting plans in place to do so. What I'd like to do right now is introduce Marcus Arbuckle from the, from Kenny, Kenny Christensen. He's going to go over some of the, the findings, the things that we've had for that, and then we'll open it up for questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Ryan. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity we've had to audit West Gordon City, and to thank Ryan and the whole finance department. I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into preparing for an audit and writing the financial statements, and so I'd like to thank them for that. Now, audit standards require us to report several items to governance. We consider the council to be governance, and part of your responsibilities is the oversight of the financial reporting process, where management is responsible for the day-to-day accounting and the comprehensive annual financial report or... of the financial reporting process, where management is responsible for the day-to-day accounting and the comprehensive annual financial reporter, or CAFR. An audit does not relieve governance or management of those responsibilities. As auditors were required to plan and perform an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and issue an opinion on the financial statements. There's actually four different reports that we issue as part of this audit. The first report, and, and I'll just go through all four, and then at the end I have a few findings and recommendations to go over. Um, but the first report is actually in the CAFR, it's, it's page nine of the CAFR, but it, it's our opinion where we, um, where it, I mean, it outlines management's responsibilities, it outlines auditor's responsibility, and then it issues the opinion, where in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So we feel that these financial statements are, are accurate based on the work that we've done. Um, and that, that is considered a clean opinion, that's the best opinion that can be issued. Um, the opinion, it's on the, the basic financial statements and the, uh, footnotes. The supplementary, um, information, like the statistical section or the introductory, introduction, i- is not, not audited. The second report that we issue is i- in the, the smaller report that we passed out tonight, but on page one, there's a report on internal controls. The, a very important part of an audit is the review of the internal controls that directly relate to the financial reporting process.
Sit back down, please. Hold. I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
I didn't see you leave, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Okay, and so the internal controls that we review are related to the cash dispersment process, cash receiving process, the payroll process, and then the financial closing reporting process. And we do not issue an opinion on the effectiveness of the controls, we just, uh, point out and make recommendations to be able to strengthen those, those controls. The second, or the third report that we issue is the report on, uh, major federal awards. The major federal award that we reviewed this year was the, uh, Community Development Block Grant. And we, we feel that that is materially, uh, accurate as well. I, I do have a recommend, a couple of recommendations to go through on that as well, but, but we feel that it is materially accurate, the reporting on, on that grant. The fourth and last report that we issue is, uh, for state compliance. The, the state auditor's office has asked us as part of an audit to review several areas of state code. The areas relate to fund balance, um, budgetary compliance, uh, transfers, uh, Open and Public Meetings Act. There's eight or nine different areas that we look at and, and go through those. Now, just take a minute, I'll go through the, the findings and recommendations that we had. And, and those are on, they, on page seven of, of the report that we passed out. But the first is related to the, uh, CDBG grant, the Community Development Block Grant. We just recommend that the grant coordinator track, um, his, his payroll time a little bit more accurately. They've been reporting based on an estimated, um, number of hours worked with that grant. We just need to track that a little bit more closely and report on actual hours, not, not estimated. The, the second recommendation, um, with the CDBG grant is the agreements, the contracts that the city has with the subrecipients, um, it's missing a, a small por- portion of, of, um, that, that is required. And that both of these items have been addressed, that the CDBG coordinator has implemented, um, processes to correct this, and it, it's been corrected probably about a month ago, and so, so that's good. The, the next is, um, related to internal controls on the financial close and reporting process. That we, we, uh, when we come in, um, we, we, there's a lot of work that the finance department goes through to get everything ready for us. Um, but one, one area that can be strengthened is a, a review of the work that's been done to maybe catch some, some errors before we, we get to it. Um, that during the audit, I mean, we found some, um, errors in cash, accounts receivable, fixed assets and, and debt, um, that could have been caught had a sec, more detailed secondary review been, been performed. Then the, the fourth, fourth area that I'd like to bring up is the, just related to the state compliance. It, state compliance requires that you're, with, in each fund that you're, um, within budget. And one of the funds, the city Building Capital Improvement Fund was, um, over budget. I mean, it was only about eight thousand dollars over budget, um, but just recommend to, to watch that. And the last, um, state compliance item that we noted is from the Open and Public Meetings Act. That when, uh, when meeting minutes are approved, there's three business days to, um, report those to the Utah Public Notice website. And in the two that we tested, it, it took a bit, little bit longer to, to get there. And, I mean, I know, um, finance and the city has put in steps to, um, correct the, these, these errors. Um, a- any questions about any of the findings or any of the reports that we've, we've talked about?
Any questions? Looks like you're okay.
Okay, no questions. Also, as part of an audit, we take fraud procedures very seriously. We go around the city and ask several questions, uh, related to fraud. We review journal entries, we have meetings discussing and, uh, looking for that. And I'm happy to, uh, say that we didn't find any instances of fraud. Um, we feel that the city has a good accounting system and they use, uh, sound accounting policies and, and procedures. Um, but if there's no questions, uh, thank you for allowing us to audit and see you next time.
Thanks for your good work, appreciate it.
Do you have any questions for me as the council?
Looks like you're off the hook.
Yeah, I, the motion?
Motion would be in order.
Thank you, I move to approve Resolu- Resolution fifteen dash two-two-eight accepting the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
Second. Have a motion by Councilmember Southworth and a second by Councilmember McConaughey, discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan? Oh, sorry, that's right, he left, I'm on the wrong one here. Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
The vote passes five in favor.
Councilmember Southworth?
Mayor, I guess I, I would say, just, I need to call it a point of order, I think we made a, a glaring mistake. In our council rules, policies and procedures, page thirty-eight, item H of C fourteen talks about reconsideration. It clearly states that reconsideration decided matters or issues is discouraged. However, requests will be considered by a majority vote. If orally made, a motion for reconsideration must be made, which it was and seconded, by the way. Um, but I, uh, we, 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 um, need to hold a vote for that, for that to be, um, reconsidered, the item previously, I think that was nine B. So, just a point of order, so I'll give that back to the chair to handle that.
That doesn't follow Robert's rules, I'll have to have, uh, our legal staff review that, and we'll be back next week.
Uh, actually, no, I do say it does because of it is written, whether it follows Robert's rules or not, it's clearly written, our council rules, policies and procedures, again, item C fourteen, which is voting procedures, number eight, under reconsideration, it clearly states, I don't, I don't think that that is up for debate. Um, if there is a reconsideration, a motion has to be made, which it was, and a second, you seconded it, now a vote has to be taken place for that reconsideration.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, council?
Got a quick question before we vote. But, is the question, can, can I make that question or are we committed to the vote?
No, uh, it would be, I don't even know if what we're doing is proper. We're voting on the reconsideration evidently of the, of the motion that was made. Uh, I would point out that Councilmember Southworth did the exact same thing when we were talking about the swine, and we allowed it to stand about a month ago, but evidently, in our rules, uh, I'm not sure, I haven't read that, but he's challenged, uh, so, let's vote.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, my thought, Mayor, since, uh, two folks who expressed significant interest in this are no longer here, I would suggest that we table the vote on this until the next meeting. Since the request was for reconsideration was set for January thirteenth, I think it would be appropriate to wait until those, uh, who are, who are expressing interest are able to voice their opinions there.
So that's motion.
I, I would like to.
More question than anything.
If, if it's okay, I'd like to just be done with this, you know, and, and move on. If we could just have the vote, I'd just ask for that. That one consideration.
Would those who are absent be able at the next meeting to say, let's reconsider this?
If, if you read, if you read further, you have two regular meetings on your previous council votes. Just means you've got to vote, we have to do it right, is all I'm saying.
He can still do it on, uh, January thirteenth, he can bring it back, so, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
Again, to clarify, this is voting whether we want to reconsider.
Uh-huh.
And I vote no.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Vote fails two to three.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, just a comment on, I, I think, and this, because of the timing, but kind of required, Mayor, because they had those two present because they left. They will be here, but two of you will not, will be your new councilmembers, so even the next vote, two of you who voted on will be here, so it really, we're kind of at a loss, you know, it. Two members who voted on it today will not participate in it regardless, unless we do it. Ten, would have done it potentially next week if we have a special session. But that was, that's still, I think, up for grabs. I, I don't know. I just, it's just a comment, it's not a question, it's just a comment.
I need a motion to adjourn city council meeting and adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting.
So moved?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Southworth and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. We call to order the redevelopment agency meeting, uh, December sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. First item of business, item two A, approve the minutes, December second, two thousand fifteen, as presented.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by board member McConaughey and a second by board member Nichols, discussion? Let's vote.
Chair Roth?
Yes.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
The vote passes five in favor.
Business item two B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution number one eight zero accepting a loan from the city of West Jordan in the amount of approximately four million five hundred thousand for acquisition of property located at ninety-two zero four South, fifty-six hundred West for the purpose of facilitating development within the city. David O'Keefe?
This is a companion, uh, item two, item eight A of the city council agenda.
Any questions? Councilmember McConaughey?
Move to approve Resolution one eight zero accepting the loan?
Second.
Have a motion by board member McConaughey and a second by board member Hanson, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Chair Roth?
Yes.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes five in favor.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion by board member Hanson and a second by board member Southworth. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No, I'm enjoying this.
We're adjourned. We are adjourned.